Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:30 PM. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley-Broom, and I want to welcome you to our first in-person regular session meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park in 2021. I know, we all made it through. We're getting through it. So I think that is a cause for applause. We have all four council members present, Councilman Clay, Councilman Taylor, Councilman Allen, and Councilman Gay. So I'm calling the meeting to order at this time. Our first action is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is an invocation, and Pastor Dent will be delivering it this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor.
It's so good to see everybody together. It's been a long time. We just want to thank God for that, so let us pray.
Heavenly Father, honor God. The world as we know it is gone, and for what feels like such a long time, we have experienced so much hardship during this pandemic. We are so thankful to you for sparing our lives so that we may meet again for this city council meeting and future activities that are planned for this community. May your grace and love and kindness be with our mayor and council members who assist her in the decision-making process regarding the items listed on the agenda. As we prepare to walk in the future, we pray for the new normal to come. May our hearts be united in you more than ever. May the tender moments of seeing someone again in person be all the richer and more treasured. May the reunions, interactions, and moments ahead be held in such intentionality, and may we turn to you in sincere gratitude. Bless our community, the staff, and the essential workers who serve us with diligence and compassion. Protect your firefighters and police officers with your perpetual presence. Heal our police officers who have been injured. Help us to come out of this pandemic better and not bitter. Help us to become more considerate of others, more mindful to help one another, how we can serve. We are your children, and we thank you that no matter how dark the times may get, there's hope of the dawn to come. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next item is additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda. Madam City Manager, I believe we have a couple. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have item 8A, which is going to be removed.
That's 8A removed? A is in Adam? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And then we're gonna add item 8F, which would be the CCTV net planner contract.
All right. Any others?
No, ma'am.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Those additions and deletions have been noted. Item 3A is approval of the regular session minutes dated June 21st, 2021.
I move to approve with a correction.
All right. Is there a second?
Seven.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Go ahead, Councilman Clay.
My correction is on packet page nine. We had gotten the others in, but this was one that didn't get in, and it is on line 163. It says, "Now the park" in your packet. It has been corrected by Chevila to say "Mountain Park." Is that correct, Chevila?
Yes.
That's all I had.
All right. Any other amendments to those minutes from June 21st? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. Item 3B is approval of the workshop session minutes from June 21st.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 4A. Well, we have a number of proclamations to present this evening. The first is going to be a presentation of a proclamation to the College Park Police Department for its outstanding service and prompt professional response on April 29th to a major threat to our city and its residents without incident. Item 4B is a presentation of a proclamation designating August 3rd, 2021, as National Night Out. Item 4C is a presentation of the Spirit of GMIS Award to our Chief Information Officer, Mr. Michael Hicks, by the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government in recognition of his outstanding work as a member of the Georgia chapter of GMIS. 4D is a presentation of a proclamation to the College Park Tumbleweed Gymnastics Team for their accomplishments in local, state, and regional competitions for the 2020-2021 season. And then 4E is going to be an introduction of new employees by Dr. Dwight Baker. So what we're gonna do is, we will come down and present these proclamations. For those of you who are involved in the proclamations and will be participating in the photographs, you have the option of keeping your masks on or taking them off for the sole purpose of the picture. All of us have received both of our vaccines, and we'd love to smile with you, but if you don't feel comfortable, that is absolutely fine. It is your choice. So while we're down here, while we're talking, I'll keep my mask on, but for the pictures, I'll take mine off. So it is up to all individuals. But let's start with the College Park Police. While everyone is getting assembled, I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the City of College Park recognizes the College Park Police Department for its outstanding service and prompt professional response, April 29th, 2021, to a major threat to our city and its residents without incident. And whereas, as a result of the cooperative efforts of law enforcement jurisdictions, the fugitive was apprehended by College Park Police Officer Andre Townsend. The entire team of officers and 911 operators were relentless in their determination to capture the criminal and return him to custody without causing harm to anyone involved. And whereas, we acknowledge the entire police command staff for their crucial updates from the scene, the entire department, and the officers that stayed on site even after other jurisdictions left. And whereas, once it was confirmed that the fugitive was in custody, the deputy commander of the U.S. Marshal Services received a call from the family members of the victims in Arizona thanking College Park Police for apprehending the criminal. And whereas, the City of College Park is a safer place because of the actions of our local law enforcement officers who never gave up and persisted in pursuit and followed the letter of the law to capture. They are our heroes, to whom the city is deeply grateful for their service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park acknowledged the College Park Police Department and hereby recognized the following police officers and staff involved in peacefully apprehending the criminal that posed a threat to our community. The entire police command staff, the day shift, Lieutenant Tiffany Thomas, Sergeant Nico Goss, Sergeant Koishan Fields, Officers Andre Townsend, Jamika Harris, Camille Johnson, Joshua Ando, Willie Connor, Michael McPherson, Ivory Morris, Rodney Morgan, Takesha Frazier, LaShel Davis, and Gloria Martin proclaim this 19th day of July, 2021. And I gotta tell you, if this does not deserve a standing ovation, I don't know what does. We're not done with the police yet. We got National Night Out. Don't go too far. All right. We've got a resolution. And mark your calendars for August 3rd. National Night Out is always a great event, and I promised Officer Patiagua that I would not be on the grill, so everybody's burgers and hot dogs will be cooked to a certain temperature and not over it, and burned to a crisp. So whereas, the 38th Annual National Night Out, a unique crime-drug prevention event sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch, has been scheduled for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And whereas, the NNO provides a unique opportunity for the City of College Park to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, all residents and businesses play a vital role in assisting the College Park Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of College Park and is supportive of National Night Out 2021 locally. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the City of College Park be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of College Park. And whereas, police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And now therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council, do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of College Park to join with the College Park Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 38th Annual National Night Out on August 3rd, 2021. Further, let it be resolved that we, the Mayor and City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, as National Night Out in the City of College Park.
I'm Mike Hourhan with University of Georgia, specifically the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. And one of my privileges is to be the academic advisor to an organization here in Georgia made up of public service professionals, IT and IS professionals. And I'm honored to be here tonight, and even more honored for the reason why I'm here tonight, and that is to recognize your own Michael Hicks, who is on the board of the Georgia GMS, in fact, first vice president, and is currently serving as acting president, but our president is under the weather a little bit. I'm not here by myself. There's a couple of the board members, and so I don't want to take away from their show. But on an annual basis, UGA selects an individual for the Spirit of GMS Award, along with some other awards. And this year, Michael Hicks earned that award for his exemplary service to the board, to service beyond the call of duty in terms of what it is he's done, and some fellow board members are gonna talk a little bit more about that. So I truly believe this is an award from Georgia GMS to Georgia GMS. I'll hush up and turn it over to my colleagues. First of all, Mr. Larry Hobbs, who's the executive director and media past president of Georgia GMS, and Jonathan Reich, who's second vice president of the board for Georgia GMS. And again, they're here to recognize your own Michael Hicks, who is on the board and is first vice president of Georgia GMS. Gents, it's up to you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and welcoming us to give this proclamation and this award. We couldn't honestly pick a better person. So Georgia GMS is an organization statewide that takes all of the IT professionals, IS technology groups from municipalities, from county government, even state government, and really takes that opportunity for everybody to bring in their wealth of knowledge, share the technology that we're doing in other organizational units throughout the state. And we're led by a great group of people. And this award really goes to Mr. Hicks because he has not only stepped up in so many ways in our organization, but Mayor, he is establishing professional standards. He is doing things that we could only wish we could do sooner. But because Michael Hicks has done this, we really thought the Spirit of GMS Award is due him for so many reasons. Only a couple we can really spend here today. I know you're a busy group. But Council, Mayor, we appreciate the time, and I'd like to present this to Mr. Hicks on behalf of the Georgia GMS Board as a whole.
Madam Mayor, if I could say a couple words? So salutations are certainly in order. Mayor and Council, thank you for having enough faith in me to allow me to go to these conferences to represent College Park. We are on the map now. The state, the governor, the Attorney General's Office, they know about College Park now. Mercedes Miller, thank you for allowing the department heads to have professional development, because that comes from the city manager's office having a vision to allow the directors to go out and teach these classes. And last but certainly not least, the group in the back. Could you guys just stand the IT team very quickly? Just want everybody to know. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons I'm able to go to these classes is because I've got a great team that keeps the network working while I'm away. So I'll introduce them very quickly. We talked about the police, National Night Out, and all the things the police does. Mike, will you raise your hand, please? This guy makes sure all the technology is working inside of the police cars. Everything has to work, and this guy's the one that makes it happen. Next to him is Paul Bennett. Paul Bennett is our assistant network manager. He and Mike Sublet in the back, raise your hand, Mike. Those two guys are responsible. Every time you turn on your computer, they're the guys that behind the scenes make sure it's working. To, next to Paul is the senior member of our team, Robert Givens. Everybody knows Robert, but guess what? Those telephones that you've got, a lot of the things that he does behind the scenes with the building, it wouldn't happen without Robert. Behind those are really the anchors. Conica, will you raise your hand, please? Conica does all of the data mining for our New World and our utility software. So we happen to have Conica. Last but not least, is the anchor of our team, Ms. West. None of us could get anything done without Ms. West, so I want to take time, Mayor and Council, to just acknowledge these folks. Because while I'm away, they get to them. Thank you. Thank you, Mercedes. Picture time.
I thought you wanted to stay up there and not come inside.
Sure, absolutely.
Mike, do you want to invite?
We'll be awesome. If the team will come down, let's get a quick picture.
You'll stay in the picture.
Sure, okay.
If you're all comfortable taking your mask off and making that picture, you want, you still will. And if you could help a couple of you on the street.
Come on around.
Thank you. We feel the same way about you.
We appreciate it, seriously. It's a major award. We're proud that he's on our team.
We're proud he's on our team.
We didn't see why y'all back.
Thank you, Mayor.
I must say, I was expecting tumbleweeds. Remember last time, they were lined up against the wall?
They're used to being one on.
Okay. Fair enough. That's all right. But come on up. All right. Yeah, I know. And they make us a sight when they're all dressed in their uniforms. All right. Don't say that. Come on up.
You're trying to watch them in the big room.
No, it's not. All right. So we have a proclamation for the College Park tumbleweed team. Whereas, the College Park tumbleweeds had an impressive season despite challenges caused by the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020 to 2021. Whereas, the competitive gymnastics season was from August 10th through May 14th, 2021. Gymnasts competed in the USA Gymnastics Junior Olympic and the Amateur Athletic Union. Whereas, the Excel Bronze tumbleweed team competed and placed first at all USA gymnastics sanctioned competitions this season. Whereas, all 36 participants on the tumbleweed gymnastics team scored a 9.0 or higher on the floor exercise. Whereas, Excel Gold gymnast Reagan Wright, is it Alana? Alana Hatcher represented the City of College Park tumbleweeds programs as state champions on April 10th, 2021, at the Infinite Energy Center in Duluth, Georgia. Whereas, Excel Silver gymnast Jasmine Lay and Excel Gold gymnast Sadie Westlin were regional qualifiers. Whereas, Excel Gold gymnast Sadie Westlin placed first in regionals on May 1st, 2021, at Lake Point Sporting Complex in Emerson, Georgia. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park that the College Park tumbleweeds gymnastics team is recognized for their hard work, dedication, and their accomplishments during the competitive 2020-2021 season at the local, state, and regional level of competition, proclaim this 19th day of July, 2021.
All right. Who wants to hold the proclamation?
You're all taller than you.
I'll get back here.
Very good tumbleweed.
Thank you. We've got employees. Dr. Baker.
I am here to present the new employees for the period of June 20th, June 2021 and July 2021. Employees, if you're here, will you please come forward and take your picture with Mayor and Council? Deborah Callaway, cashier. Kiana Cook, code enforcement officer. Kendall Evans, police officer. Demetrius Harvey, laborer one. Sean Hightower, litter collector. Kimberly Lowe, accounting assistant. Brittany Poole, jailer. Fritz Reamy, police officer. Nathan Rittiger, executive intern. Bruce Braxton, part-time police officer. Jasmine Buncombe, part-time court clerk. Tashika Cousins, police officer. Tatiana Fleming, police officer. Tiffany Hahn, event service manager. Janice Spady, part-time receptionist. Melissa Echevera, director of public works. And Jonathan Allen, police officer. And Joanne Young, human resources generalist.
You ain't gotta call her name.
If you're comfortable taking your mask off and making that appointment, you did not? You're pretty excited. Can you do that? Can you do that? One more time.
All right. The next item on our agenda is remarks of citizens. Ms. Moore?
Yes, ma'am. I have two email remarks, and the first one reads, let me start my timer. The first one is from Kathleen, Katherine McLeod, and it reads, "My name is Katherine McLeod. I am the community support and coordinator for the center, a new business that has opened up in College Park on Old National Highway. I would like to introduce us to the Mayor and City Council members by letting you know that who we are and what we are about. The center will provide vital community supportive type services as a faith-based organization, i.e. access to educational training, food, job resources, housing, and identified mental health services available locally to persons in need."
Ms. Moore, can you get a little bit closer to the mic, because I'm having a little trouble hearing you, so...
You want me to start over?
No, I just want to make sure that everyone can hear. Thank you.
It will also network with organizations throughout College Park and the county to provide opportunities for professionals and volunteers with specialized skills to empower, educate, and train. Location is 4818 Old National Highway, College Park, Georgia. Okay. Trying to stop my timer. Okay. The next comment is from Kirby Lou, and it reads, "This email is specifically to the Wardport Council member Gay. This council person conducts himself without integrity, morals, or decency in his campaign. His campaign tactics are consistently targeting members of the community for character assassination. He owes Wardport an apology, as over the past week, members of the community that he claims to represent have fallen victim to false information spread by either himself or his campaign through robocalls or spam emails. If he had an actual platform, then he wouldn't be spending time on resources toward robocalls or spam emails propagating false allegations. I would like for Councilman Gay to formally and openly state that he will henceforth run a clean and decent campaign and let his talents or lack thereof speak for themselves, a concerned citizen." And those are all the comments that I received.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience who was not either one of those folks, who's already had the opportunity to speak for three minutes, if you wish to speak for one minute at this time, you may approach and get that time. Seeing no one, we will go ahead and move forward. Item 6A is a discussion and update on the top 10 delinquent property taxpayers. And item 6B is a discussion and update on the top 10 delinquent and utility customer accounts. Both of those are being handled by Ms. Florid Bradley. Any questions for Ms. Florid Bradley on either one of those issues?
No questions. I had a couple of questions, and I apologize, Althea. I didn't see the, an email response to them. I expect you sent it. You always do. This is on packet page 52. And the first item, B&amp;K Hotel Group, what is the status of that? Was that payment actually received?
Let me look up the email, because I did send, because there were a couple of questions. Hold on one second.
I didn't see it, but I get a flood of responses on Monday usually, and I could have missed it, so I...
Yes, I sent it to both emails, but I have it right here. On the Howard Johnson, they did make a $20,000 credit card payment, and they promised to pay, that they promised to initially pay on July 9th, so we did receive that. They are aware that they need to pay $30,000 this month and another $30,000 in August to avoid the September 7th tax sale.
Good, good. Excellent. And the next item for Express Jet, what was the rationale for reclassifying that property?
Tax compliance firm Ryan LLC convinced county assessor that their lease was untaxable, was non-taxable since there was no provisions for the lease to have any ownership rights. The statute we use to initially get them to, to initially get them on the tax rule has a provision that any leasehold improvements are taxable. Express Jet assumed lease from their merger with Southwest. He's working with Fincher in Denmark, and we have supplied to the county assessor what we believe the value of the lease improvements are.
The statute we used to initially get them to, to initially get them on the tax rule has a provision that any leasehold improvements are taxable. Express Jet assumed lease from their merger with Southwest. He's working with Fincher and Denmark, and we have supplied to the county assessor what we believe the value of the lease improvements are. And this was just last week, so we should get some information soon.
But the basic property tax, is that part of the use of front issue with the airport? Okay, that's what I suspected. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry.
You're welcome, no problem.
Any other questions for Ms. Florid Bradley on item 6A or 6B?
No.
All right, any issues or questions for Ms. Florid Bradley in regard to item 6C, which is the utility assistance grant program update?
I got a question. When is the last day people can sign up? I know it don't change so many times.
It's open. It's open, it's ongoing. They can come in and they have, it's by appointment only. They have to contact the grant administrator and set up an appointment, but we're open, wide open. We're working with any and everybody that comes in and needs assistance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I did get your, all your answers to those, and I'm happy to hear. You think we're not going to leave any money on the table?
We better not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Florid Bradley. We have no public hearings, so we're moving on to item 8A, which is not on the agenda anymore. That's been removed from the agenda. So we're moving on to item 8B, which is consideration of an action on a request for approval of the renewal of city planner services agreement between the city of College Park and the collaborative Any questions regarding this particular issue? I see Mr. Hightower's here.
No.
All right, is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, item C is a consideration of an action on a request for approval of landscaping services for the city of College Park Golf Course and the Recreation and Cultural Arts Recreation Sports Field. Ms. Johnson, I believe this is your item.
Good evening.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson on this particular issue?
I'm good.
Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. All right, item 8D is consideration of an action on a request for approval of the annual lease payment to Motorola Solutions Credit Company for maintenance of police radios and equipment. This is our inter.
I'll move to approve that.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Item E is consideration of an action on a request for approval to pay Central Square Technologies for the annual maintenance and technical services to maintain the updates and service for the One Solution RMS CAD systems in the College Park Police Department.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8F is a consideration of an action on CCTV SLA net planner system.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 9A is consideration of an action on an ordinance authorizing the city's Main Street Advisory Board to administer the College Parklet program and to approve policies and procedures related thereto.
I believe there were some changes to that.
Okay.
Yeah, you were specifically addressing the indemnity provision?
Yes, I was.
Yes, sir. Those have not been made yet. We reviewed your heads up. Those are in the works. You, the council, the speech approved subject to that, or we can bring it back?
Well, it would seem to me that since the parklets were actually going to be installed today, I believe.
And then I think inclement weather got in.
Presumably they'll be installed when it stops raining. Do we need, we probably need that in place, don't we?
Let's, let's talk with Ms. Coakley since she is here. She might be able to give us a better idea of the timeline. I think you, I think I might have received an email asking for a second round of volunteers when the weather permits, so if you could let us know.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So we are planning to move forward on this Thursday morning. I have the same set of volunteers in hand. This policy would need to be in place. The businesses are giving a leeway of the first 90 days, so essentially we would just need this approved before that timeframe. So it is totally up to the body if you would like us to bring it back, but the changes that you did request, Councilman Clay, we were making them. Ms. Danielle was going to take care of those.
I normally don't do this, but I think we need to get that agreement in place, so I'm going to move to approve, subject to the agreement being adjusted, to take care of the indemnity with regard to premises. I think that was, that was a major issue you guys wanted to look at. There was a little lack of clarity as to whether the premises are the parklets or the DOT right-of-way or the whatever, and that needed to be clarified. So the, so I'll move to approve it, subject to that change being put in. And I think you made another minor change with regard to 11 o'clock.
Correct. There was one grammatical change that was made, as well as the time for the alcohol portion for the businesses to be able to sell alcohol, so.
Yeah, you were going to serve them a drink, and they'd have to drink it in a millisecond because the waitress was going to take it away.
I asked coffee, huh?
We stand by our rules.
That's too good for anyone. I mean, I suppose you can chug along, but.
We don't want to encourage that.
We don't want to encourage that. So I, and I think that was pretty much the substantive changes.
So I want to make sure that everyone's clear on the indemnification issue before we're voting on that, to make sure that we all understand it. Gentlemen, are you clear on Councilman Clay's concerns about that and what Fincher Denmark is going to do in regard to that? Or do you want Mr. Denmark to go into a little bit more detail on that?
I can go through, I could go through the changes if that's helpful, I mean.
Mr. Denmark, can you put it in a, in a nice box for us?
There's a concern that the parklets are in the DOT right-of-way, but there's a, the interplay between the DOT right-of-way and the restaurant owners having ownership or lease control over the patrons in the parklets. And so if a citizen or patron is injured, whose responsibility? And so the city, the city of College Park needs to be indemnified such that it's clear that it's not the city's liability, but rather it'll be the liability of either the restaurant owner or maybe even DOT, but they're going to indemnify the city of College Park so that we're not on the hook.
I would assume, though, that if I were DOT, I would not want College Park to place that responsibility on us since, since the people are standing on the parklets, sitting on the parklets, getting on and off the parklets, but they're not actually walking in DOT's street.
I thought DOT already.
It's DOT anyway, first and foremost, and secondarily, it's, we can shift liability by agreement. And so the restaurateurs will be agreeing to indemnify the city of College Park. So if you're going to get a permit, part of that process is you're going to agree to indemnify the city. And so whatever ordinary rule that would have prevailed, those are going to be amended or affected by the indemnity agreement.
Okay, so it, you don't have to single out DOT or anyone. All you have to say is, it is not us. And that was my concern, because it talked about premises and premises. What are the premises?
We'll define that and what the indemnity is.
Okay.
All right, so everyone clear?
Clear.
All right, Councilman Clay has made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. All right, item 10A, consideration of an action on a resolution to authorize the College Park Business and Industrial Development Authority to refinance all the obligations related to the previously issued Civic Center Project Revenue Bonds Series 2013 and the Civic Center Project Revenue Bonds Series 2016.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening. I have Ed Wall, financial advisor, and Doug Selby here if you have any questions regarding the refinance.
Any questions for Ms. Florid Bradley, Mr. Wall, or Mr. Selby?
No questions.
I have one question.
All right.
It's probably in my packet, I'm being lazy. What is the total amount of refinance of these bonds, the total amount?
Forty-one thousand, forty-one million, eight seventy.
No.
For all of them?
There's two of them.
There's one.
So, Councilman Gay, how you doing? There's five bond issues, A, B, C, D, and E. The A series is 33,990. The B series is 3,335,000. The C series is 1,920,000. The D series is 4,170,000. And the E series is 3,245,000. You don't have the E before you yet. We'll have to bring the E back to you. We didn't have enough documents done yet to bring it to you.
And approximately, how much of that is BIDAT debt?
In total?
Yes, approximately.
The city's total is about 165 million. Probably 80% of it is through BIDAT.
Okay. And one final question. Have any of these debts ever been satisfied since they was first originated?
So you have paid off some debt in the years that I've worked for you, yes, sir. We're not extending the maturity, these maturities, they're 15 years in term, and some of your debt goes out for 30 years.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
First off, we've already approved in concept going forward with this.
Yes, sir.
BIDAT has already approved in concept going forward with this.
Yes, sir.
The amount of pressure that this takes off of the city's finance over the next three years, if I remember rightly, is about $25 million?
Yes, sir.
Spread over the three years.
Yes, sir.
And that enables us to hopefully not have to raise taxes, et cetera, et cetera, in doing that.
Yes, sir.
So what we're really approving tonight is the wording of the authorization to BIDAT, who in turn also will then have a set of documents to approve to actually execute this.
Yes, sir. To be specific, you're approving the intergovernmental contract that backs the bonds and pays for them, and you're approving the issuance of the bonds by BIDAT.
Okay, so, thank you. So the, one thing that I didn't understand, you said there is one that is not in this package?
Yes, sir, Series E bond.
And when would that get approved?
So we're still trying to get all the documents together so that Doug Selby can finish drafting them, and I don't have a time period. I hope to bring it to you either in a special call meeting or at your August meeting.
Okay. And one of the issues that I had, and the only issue that I had since we've already effectively approved it conceptually, is that the city attorney had not reviewed all the documents in the packet. Have you done that, Winston? Are you good with it? Okay.
I have reviewed them too. They're good to go.
Okay, so I will move to approve. Do we have to, should we approve each one separately, or do you want to do this as a group? I think that we ought to be doing separately.
I think so as well.
Just to make sure. So I will approve item A, move to approve item A.
Is there a second?
I'll second with a comment. I might want to also mention that it helps us maintain a credit rating that is a very good credit rating, so if we do have to get into problems later on, we have that credit rating and we can borrow money a lot, a lot cheaper. And we can pay it off early. If you pay it off early, I forgot what that was, Mr. Wall, if we paid it off?
After five years, no free money.
Okay, just like free money.
And, and the actual cost of the refinancing, because there is a cost if you don't pay it off early. I presume the cost is less if you do, was about, if I remember, about a million and a half dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so to take $25 million of pressure off of us, given the serious situation that we've been in due to the COVID, cutting off a lot of our revenue, I think it's a real bargain. And if we can pay it off earlier, I assume that number of one and a half million gets better.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have one comment, if I may. I think, as a matter of fact, I actually publicly recommended that we do bond refinancing due to the issues of COVID. But my bigger concern, not concern, but my bigger issue is that we've carried this debt for a long period of time, way before I was on council in summer. And my thing is, I was always raised to believe that you pay your debt off. You don't, that's how my parents raised us, you pay your debt off. We've had approximately $100 million of revenue for at least a decade, so all I'm saying is, I'm glad that there is a way to take some of the pressure off us because of COVID, but we, as a body, need to seriously start thinking about how to satisfy some of this debt.
Well, to that, to that point, I agree with you that we do certainly need to be in the mode of making sure that we honor our commitments. We also built an arena in that time. And so that increased the debt.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That we built an arena in that time, so the debt has gone up. So even, I mean, that, that changed the game in terms of the numbers. So as we're attempting to address those issues, we're still borrowing more in order to do different projects, but the, the heart of what you're saying, I, I wholeheartedly agree with. Any other comments, any questions?
Well, I guess the only other thing I would say is, if we hadn't spent money to buy back the property from the airport that was bought with 80% federal money and 20% Atlanta money, we wouldn't be in the position we're in right now to have a Six West. So these are good investments in the future of the city, as long as we're careful what we're doing.
And who is the bond, is it all been one organization? Because I know you said at once that we were shopping it out, and I never know who found it to.
So there's all kind of different folks that own the bonds. Some are owned by individuals of the public, some are owned by PNC Bank, some are owned by SunTrust Bank. So it's all, each time you do a bond issue, we bid it out competitively, and it's different folks that get it different times. And none of the maturities have been extended. When we refinance, it would just be to get a lower interest rate. And so as you pay, as you get money from Six West, it would be great that you call the bonds early, like y'all talked about, and you can pay them off early. But we've never extended the maturity. Whenever a transaction was done, they were either done with 15-year bonds, 20 years, the original GICC was done with 30-year bonds.
Do you think we're solid enough to take on more bond debt?
After this financing, yes, sir.
We could?
You weren't before.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wall or any comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Item 10B?
I move to approve.
Let me read it out. Consideration of an action on a resolution to authorize College Park Business and Industrial Development Authority to refinance all the obligations related to the previously issued Public Safety Revenue Bonds Series 2013.
I still move to approve.
And Councilman Clay has moved to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item C, consideration of an action on a resolution to authorize the College Park Business and Industrial Development Authority to refinance all the obligations related to the previously issued Hotel Project Revenue Bonds Series 2014.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Consideration of, item D is consideration of an action on a resolution to authorize the College Park Business and Industrial Development Authority to refinance all the obligations related to the previously issued taxable refunding revenue bonds Series 2014.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. And item E is consideration of an action on a request for, oh, we're done with that. Okay, I'm sorry. I got into the rhythm of it. All right, we're on to holiday events, and that's Ms. Johnson. Consideration of an action on a request for approval of holiday events hosted by the College Park Department of Recreation and Cultural Arts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Any questions? We're looking at doing our Christmas parade, so hopefully we can do that since we canceled it last year with COVID. Also doing the Thanksgiving luncheon, our senior luncheon, and we're adding that new event with Santa's ride-by, so we'll have some great events.
That was so great last year.
I know, it was. Well, it was a great idea.
Oh, my gosh. And there was an amazing elf on the fire truck.
Yes, so I'm looking forward to that. So we added that event to our normal schedule. Even though we're going to do the Christmas parade, we will have the, the drive-by with the Santa. I think that was a great idea with the police and fire. It was a great collaborative event. So, any questions?
I see on here, there's got, Light Up the City Tinsel Trail.
So, yes, so we're working on a collaboration with Main Street on something added to our light-up, and maybe I can briefly touch on it, but we're looking at adding trees and maybe having collaborations with businesses to either sponsor a tree and add that to the light-up for the evening. So we're working with Main Street on that.
Great.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson? Does this require a motion? Is this, does this require a motion?
It's just something we normally bring to you. Just so that you're aware of the dates.
Okay, I mean, if anyone. Ms. Miller, does this require a motion? I don't, I don't think we.
No, ma'am, just information.
All right, just information. Any other questions for Ms. Johnson on that? All right.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. City Attorney's report.
Just want to say it's good to be back, good to see all of you again. And I'm looking forward to seeing you down at the GMA convention in Savannah.
Ms. Miller, City Manager's report.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, got the report of Mayor and Council. Start with Councilman Clay.
I'd just like to welcome everybody back, and it feels really good to be back. I'd like to encourage everybody out there who has not gotten their shot. There is a Delta variant. It spreads faster. There's indications that it's a little more severe. And it's a good idea to get your vaccination. It'll make all of us safer. And with that, I'm just glad to be back. And I have nothing else that I want to cover.
All right, Councilman Taylor?
Yes, I want to say coming up on this election season, I feel like, you know, I've been hearing a lot in the community, I feel like that we need to find a way to respect each other and treat each other throughout this election. Is, I think it's real bad to treat people wrong and intimidate people while you're trying to do this. It's a race. And I feel like we should just get out and let the people realize who they want and, you know, vote for the person you want, and don't be intimidating to vote for anybody. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Councilman Allen?
First of all, let me just welcome everybody back. I think it's great to be back here. I love being here in the council. I love seeing people's faces and their comments. I want to say thanks to Public Works, the water and sewer people. The other day I was out, and it was raining about like it was this afternoon. And there were four people that work for the city, water and sewer, and they were down in a ditch fixing a water line in the rain, had mud all over them. And I stopped to say thank you very, very much. And they appreciated it. So when you see these people out on the street, and, and they're in these holes, and they're wet, and they're dirty, just stop and say thank you. They really do appreciate it. These guys were doing a great job, and they just really appreciated me just saying hello to them and, and thanks. I got word today that there's a former City of College Park worker, Louise Campbell. Probably none of us remember, but today she's selling, celebrating her 99th birthday. So I just wanted to have a shout-out to her. Ninety-nine years. She's probably not up listening to this tonight, but hopefully she'll, she'll get the word. But happy birthday, and, and I appreciate that, so. And that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Gay?
Well, speaking of notice, I would like to acknowledge that we're going to have the Citywide Award for Community Festival October 9th at the Phillips Park. I didn't want to say anything, but on the business of elections, as many of you know, I've, I've run for office for 30 years. I lived in College Park for all those 30 years. And I was asking myself, why do people have to say anything negative during a campaign? So I thought about the question long and hard. And I thought about the fact that $150 million was spent in election ads during the runoff or warn-off. $150 million. And I kept saying to myself, why would someone spend that much money saying anything but favorable about another candidate? And it dawned on me that beyond it being negative, you now have a government that can get legislation approved that gives more equality and fairness to this, to this country. One side was more or less dominating. You can now talk about expansion of Supreme Court. You can talk about getting stimulus money. There's just so much can happen when one side never give. So I guess what I'm saying is, if anything comes out of this campaign, and I guess I'm talking to the, to the record, but if anything comes out of this campaign, I'm going to own my words. I'm not going to hide behind fake emails. I'm not going to hide behind my, my citizenry. The words are going to come out of my mouth. And the final thing I want to say is that it's silence that's betrayal. That, that what has hurt us more than anything is silence. It's not speaking truth. Truth to power makes change. And if there's corruption, if there's nepotism, if there's fraud, I'm not getting ready to sit up here and pretend like that I don't see things. That's going to be my role. And as I was telling someone today, reasonably within the law, within ethics, as we say in the streets, we're going to turn up. But we're going to do it fair, but we're not going to play games. We're going to speak the truth, and we're going to let the evidence go where it goes. So I look forward to a great, competitive, healthy reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I would ask that we are, I think, at the top of an election season for a good chunk of our city and that moving forward, we keep the election comments out of it because we're here to do this, the city's business. And whatever the citizens decide is what the citizens decide. So let's stay focused on that. And one of the things that we need to decide is, since the governor has allowed us to take to the citizens the, the decision of the municipal option sales tax, when that will go on the ballot? And in talking with my counterparts in Haightville and East Point, they are looking at May 24th, 2022 for, for that. And some of that, what I'd like to do is have the general counsel from GMA come in and talk with us a little bit about the process behind that and have us make a decision in regard to that. So if the, the body is willing to do that, I will extend an invitation. I know that on August 2nd, we have the, the finalist for the police chief coming in. But perhaps on August 16th, we can get that at a workshop session to answer any questions you might have about that process. Because I don't think either, either city, any of the other cities in the tri-cities are inclined to put it on the November ballot. So I think we'd be shooting for that if we were falling in line with the other cities. So is that amenable to the body?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Also wanted to thank Sergeant Long and Battalion Chief Jones for putting up with me for multiple hours on ride-alongs that I did with the police department and the fire department. I've learned so very, very much. And it, it deepened my appreciation for our first-line responders and the work that they do day in and day out for the citizens of this city. And I would encourage all of my colleagues, if you have the opportunity, to do the same because it is, it, the, the level of professionalism and teamwork and heart that our first responders have is, is truly exceptional. And the way that, in which they, they care for the people that they encounter in our city is, is truly something to behold. So if you get the chance, jump at it. And I hope to go with Public Works next. I'm putting that out there. All right, okay. All right. So that's all that I have. We concluded executive session, and we needed, we have a couple of motions out of executive session. One relating to litigation, an authorization of a settlement memo.
I will move to approve that.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman, I heard Councilman Allen. Or, you guys are, it's him. All right, I'll, I'll give it to Councilman Gay then. All right, so Councilman Gay seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I think we had, I think, believe that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. I think we had two cybersecurity issues as well. Cybersecurity issue A, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. And cybersecurity action B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I saw him first, I saw him first. All right, Councilman Gay on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. And I believe, oh, we have to approve the executive session minutes. Is that your motion?
I move.
Oh, okay, Councilman Clay moved. Councilman Allen? He seconded. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. And at 8:30, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.